Resolution one zero four. The meeting was called to order by Larry Walter at six o'clock. Tendees, all councilors and rees and deputy rees. Chief administration office, Paul and I, the foreman, Jamie, Natalie, fire chief, will attend at seven o'clock. Absent with notice, Gail, Hutton, Louie Hoover, and seconder. Gary, seconded by. Derek, on favor. Gary. We're two approval of the agenda. As any additions or additions to the agenda.
Are we able to add? February eighteenth, list of accounts for approval.
I suggest we put that in at the same time that we do our current meeting cuts for approval. And then we can just do it back to back.
One or financial.
Yeah, so we don't need resolution for a decision. But basically, let's just put a resolution out and added. So we're doing a second review or how would you like to word that?
Yeah, there were some questions that I had that I didn't. I watched the video and we didn't talk about it either.
Okay, so second review of accounts payable from the meeting on February eighteenth.
I believe it was February eighteenth.
Okay, right. Counselors, you think that addition?
Yeah.
All right, I'll do a resolution to have that added here. We'll add it to the agenda. Here, give me two seconds.
That's going to go to the finance.
Yes.
Section, right, true.
Yep.
Okay, thanks. Trevor Dooner, is there any other additions to the agenda?
So council wants to carry on, I'll just keep working there and then we get back to the agenda, I think we'll be good.
I can add the resolution.
I'll add it to the agenda because when we approve the agenda, we've got them already in resolution. So when you approve the agenda for today's meeting, you'll be appropriate the addition that you've done. When we get that item, if there's any decisions or direction as a result of that second review, we'll put that as a resolution depending on how that discussion goes.
Bill added on to the agenda, it's under seven point one point.
Uh, not quite there yet, give me one second.
I'll read the resolution, not anywhere near the resolution one oh five. Read resolve that the meeting agenda for the regular council meeting in March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five be accepted as amended. Hoover and seconder. Kent, seconded by. Derek, on favor. Carrie. I could do the previous meetings. On March fourth. Point two. Resolution one oh six, read resolve that the meeting minutes of the regular meeting of council on March fourth, two thousand twenty-five be accepted and approved as presented, Hoover and the seconder. Gary, seconded by. Clint, on favor. Carrie. And delegations. Facilitate, uh, foreman, leaving the meeting earlier. We'll jump to, uh, number six, public works. And we'll go to six point three, monthly public works and utilities report.
Okay, so not, not too much out of there. Water break here by the hall, which was, yeah, it was not a great time, but we gotta say this anyway, so. Does anybody have any questions or reports or anything else?
Those other two are in the works to get fixed up or?
Uh, well, Kate's here, does it want on fifth? This one here, I haven't done little fix for it and we're not sure if it really is one or not. We'll have to wait that one out because we can't just go. They're gonna have to prove it in there, so we're gonna have to wait for a little more.
See if more water comes up.
Sign where it actually is coming from. So I dug the little trench in the ice there today. The water's draining, the stone is draining, so. And the other, and actually, water usage is actually almost like as low as it's ever been right now. So there can't be much of one after this one, but they can't turn into bigger ones, but no panic as a vehicle, so. If there is one, I'd like to do them both at the same time so that double water advice. One, it's the two separate ones. What if we need to do one before the other, we will.
Pass that down?
The one on fifth, at least I know, we can isolate that street. We dug one last summer there and the valves all worked, so at least that's one thing. Shut the whole town down, but if there is one here, it would have to be the little town.
Oh, okay.
Uh, ditch cleaning and pipe opening up is a little bore.
Is going, yeah.
You locked quite a bit of it to do this year, kind of the normal call?
Uh, probably everything, maybe a little more, yeah. And being, so we don't wanna get too far behind us with the possible water breaks too, so. We're doing what we can ahead of time.
Good. And I noticed the bucket, the big bucket is getting repaired.
Yes.
The cylinders went off.
The tilt cylinder on the, on the tilt bucket.
Okay.
Wouldn't ever, after they, they have to dump there, they're just cleaning up the metal pile and there's a metal pipe that's welded right to the cylinder. Got broke off on the metal pile, so took it in to ready to get it repaired. It's apart, but it's not fixed, not finished yet. Called it today. And that's the sum. Yeah, we'd like to have that back.
Yeah.
As soon as possible.
Noticed that for snow.
Just using the small digging bucket on that excavator right now, so it's a little bit.
Yeah. That's all I have called, thanks. Anybody else have any question for foreman? Regarding the report. Here we go, I'll read the resolution then, resolution one one five. Read resolve that the public works and utilities reports, March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five be accepted as presented, Hoover and seconder. Derek, seconded by. Gail, on favor. Carrie. Now we will make another jump and we'll go to number seven, finance. Seven point one point one, accounts payable. Anyone have any questions that we could take to the foreman regarding the link, Clint?
I don't know if this pertains to calling or not, but thirteen, seven, nine, eight for survey.
For monumental, monument?
Yep, yep, yep.
Okay.
Yep, I can speak to that. That was between Jim Buchanan and, and I, or it got knocked over.
Oh.
And when they refer to a monument, that's just a survey mark.
Uh-huh. Had to be resurveyed or something. There was one more. Thirteen, eight, two, eight. It's four thousand two hundred and forty-nine dollars and it's by a retainer for twenty twenty-five.
Cool, that's your building inspector. Building inspector, yeah. So the contract that we have with the building inspector is that we pay an annual retainer for the services. And then basically, we've got those services for the year.
Uh-huh, I see. So the retainers for the whole year, just.
Yep, for the full year, yeah. Just availability, uh, there's no real way of, uh, of projecting what the activity would be, but you've got to have that person available or else construction projects pause. Which is where your availability.
Yeah, that's what you know.
And that's in his contract as well.
Yeah, I see.
Anyone have any other questions? Read the resolution then. Resolution one one six. Read resolve that accounts payable checks one, three, seven, nine, five to one, three, eight, four, three in the amount of one hundred twenty-two thousand, eight hundred ninety dollars and thirty-eight cents be accepted as presented and two for payment. Seconder, Gary, seconded by. Clint, on favor. Carrie. That's your part, thanks if you want to.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Yep. Thanks.
Ben? You need to go.
Actually, I got lots of them. She needs a little.
Thank you.
And before we do the fire protection report, we'll wait for fire chief two hundred and seven.
We still have new agenda items, we just added.
Oh, I see, okay, yeah, we can go from there.
Oh, did you look at your sheet? Yeah, we just handed out. How it has the new agenda item added there. Did you find the copy? Oh, yeah, we'll pass those down, but there we go. Everybody's got a full copy, so that's good. This stuff, the agenda is the same as the other one with the addition of the AP from, uh, that requested by, uh, counselor. And it's basically seven point one point.
Three?
Uh, two, that's without it, because we just finished seven point one point one.
Okay. Seven point one point two.
Yeah, so just use the new one and just prepare to just jump back and watch it.
You had questions on that?
Yes, that was, uh, one second. Thirteen, seven, three, two, it was Swan Valley Co-op. But in there, there's a whole bunch of stuff, double paid, and then it says not our bill. I don't understand that payment amount is way less than what's added in the other column.
Do we have copies of that in the cabinet?
I've got, I've already got it right here.
Oh, I know, but do we have to look at?
Uh, it was just added to the agenda, so, um, I can take some copies down if it's, uh, come along, because I have to.
I just wasn't sure.
Have to dial it or.
Cool.
So if I, if you wanna take a recess, I can use the copies pretty often, because right now, like.
I might know it or, I didn't care, but then, yeah.
All right, so we can kind of follow along, because I'm not.
Yeah, it's gonna be hard for me to follow.
So, um, I will make a, if council, if agreement as a whole, I'll make a resolution for recess, probably take some phone copies. Or you just wanna keep going and I'll make some copies here for my, my different agenda items, which I choose.
What would you lay, Larry?
Um, it'll probably take you ten, fifteen minutes to do that.
Probably five minutes.
Five minutes?
Yeah, five, ten.
Do you wanna jump to, uh, another portion on the agenda?
Yeah, we might as well keep moving.
Yeah, because we got a full agenda.
Yeah, full package.
All right. Well, would we go back to, uh, public works and utilities, six point one, uh, regarding the fiber cable replacement project nine, one, eight, five, eight?
Okay.
Let's see if Trevor's on or whatever, I can, uh, just go through some of the background during February two thousand twenty-five. It is determined that the internet data signal is no longer transmitting along the very fiber cable period in front of two, seven, eight Isabel Avenue. And they are now requesting the approval of landowners along the proposed fiber cable pathway to install new underground fiber cable line. Horizontal directional drilling, utilizing drilling mud to keep the drill hole open will minimize the impact on the surface areas. The advanced communication of drilling and installation work scheduled, scheduled to, uh, that what you were asking for, Kent, would to complete that sentence on that.
Yeah.
So is that four, you didn't get to complete one?
No.
Mine isn't completed either. It just stops at two.
I guess. Oh, yeah, mine too. You can mail it up, I might be able to find it or read it.
Here, we're changing the bottom, it says six point one on the bottom of the page. On the statement side.
Okay, the complete sentence is.
Somewhere though, my problem.
The advanced communication of drilling and installation work schedules to the municipality foreman will minimize any effect of drilling on municipality infrastructure and services.
Okay. Thanks, Kent.
So it looks like it's just going from two existing, when I looked at it earlier, uh, two pedestals are putting in a new line in front of basically two properties.
Yep.
So short run then.
Short run. Through a driveway, the gravel driveway under light directional drill underneath. And then just running a conduit with a new line and conduit. Pretty straightforward, I think.
Yeah.
I don't see anything that would be a problem with it myself.
No, maybe.
Any other questions or concerns on the fiber optic line? I'll read the resolution then. Resolution one one three, read resolve that municipality, Minnetonahou, Bozeman, approve the fiber replacement project number nine, one, eight, five, eight. Proposal submitted by Westman Communications Group, subject to drilling and installation being completed as per the proposal. And municipality being given advance notice of the drilling and installation work check. Seconder. Kent, seconded by Derek, on favor. Carrie. See anything else that's in here that's short?
Uh, six point two, we do the water treatment.
Sort of random of understanding.
I think so.
Okay, we can go to six point two. Kent, you want to go to, to this? Or just to give everybody the update or whatever on what, what Trevor had done for the background analysis?
Oh, you'd like to let me read it?
If you could.
Sure. On August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, the municipality and board entered a memorandum of understanding with the board for a period of five years. It will expire on March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Per the member, memorandum of understanding, the board has provided the municipality technical assistance in the operation and maintenance of the Minnetonahou and Bozeman water treatment plants. So the board technical assistance regarding the operation and maintenance of the Minnetonahou and Bozeman water treatment plant is critical to ensure the ongoing provision of safe drinking water to the residents in these communities and purchasers of bulk water. Next step, subject to council approval, preparing and sending a letter requesting a five-year renewal of the agreement. And then the agreement is attached.
So we do, it'd be fifty-five years.
I think there's a word missing, year in next steps.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay. Oh, yeah, it just gives the new hourly rates and stuff. For engineering services, technical services, management, damn, so. That'll be our, our rates that we may, uh, the, uh, water utility, our public, uh, utility board for their services. Yeah, last one was done in twenty twenty, so.
I'm good with it. Any other questions regarding it?
Uh, the only question I have is in the background. Says we entered this agreement in two thousand twenty-two and it was for a period of five years and expires in twenty twenty-five.
That's a typo, that should be August thirty-first of twenty twenty.
Okay.
Okay, right, it should end up in twenty-seven.
Yeah, I can answer my question.
The assigned, uh, agreement is in that page again, if you have that.
Yeah, there you go. I'm good.
Any other questions? Do you wanna read the resolution? Resolution one one four. Read resolve that the memorandum of understanding respecting the operation and maintenance of the Minnetonahou and Bozeman water treatment plants between.
Six point two, you're looking for.
Oh, yeah, I am on range one, sorry.
One one four, resolution.
Yep.
Yep.
That's the one, right, sorry. I'll read it again. Read resolve that the memorandum of understanding respecting the operation and maintenance of the Minnetonahou and Bozeman water treatment plants between the municipality, Minnetonahou, Bozeman, and the Manitoba Water Services Board be renewed for five years from April first, two thousand twenty-five to March thirty-first, two thousand and thirty. Seconder, Gary, seconded by. Derek, on favor. Carrie.
Trevor have to change any of that? Add the word year and change to twenty twenty?
I made notes here to, 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 uh, August thirty-first, twenty twenty, and after the five, that the word years.
Perfect.
Anybody find another shortcut in week twenty-two?
Gary, on the finance and your payroll?
Uh, yeah, we can do that. Seven point one point two. Questions?
Uh, I have a question. It maybe needs to be in camera though. I have a question regarding six A.
Then we'll have to move into camera, because it's all.
Yeah, I can maybe just wait till we're in camera later. I forgot about that, I shouldn't have suggested we do this right now.
Well. Then we'll find another one.
We could, yeah, we could just bump over it, Ken.
I'll keep that aside here. Do we wanna move to seven point three regarding the citizen control application grant?
Sure.
Do that. Gail, have you got that one? Did you walk through the, the, the background?
There was a whole, uh, I don't know if Trevor printed it out of all this stuff that. Keep on, uh. Oh, there it is. The COPP requires capital operating equipment to safely and effectively patrol the communities of Minnetonahou and Bozeman. So the municipality of Minnetonahou, Bozeman provide a fifteen hundred dollar grant to COPP for the purpose of purchasing the required capital operating equipment identified in its March twelfth, twenty twenty-five grant application to the community foundation in Swan Valley, subject to the foundation grant application being approved. So as far as I know, um, everything was all sent in. Candace never stated whether or not it was approved. I'm assuming once we hear from them that. You guys don't know as much as I do on the whole thing, but there was just some stuff that, um, I myself picked up some, picking up tool thingies from Dollarama and donated four of them just to COPP just to get it started before the grant came through with, just so that we don't have to be picking up needles by hand or with just barbs and tongs or whatever. So I just grabbed four of them at Dollarama and just donated them to COPP for the time being. Because there was a needle found, um, was it fourth, I believe? Just, um, I believe Sam Hawes owns the house, but Skyridge and I and his girlfriend are renting it. And yeah, it was laying in the tree, in the spruce tree, so they got a hold of Candace and she just told them that we have drop-off boxes and just deposited them there. And it was pretty much all like, new of it.
So this grant, we will know once they have their grant selection if we're eligible or.
Yeah.
Get the boxes, that's whatever.
So with that, uh, with the resolution, they've applied for a grant. We, uh, provide them a letter of support. Uh, in the letter, we've said that we'll give them fifteen hundred dollars of a supplementary grant, subject to the approval of their grant application. So we're doing about forty, forty percent, um, contribution towards that equipment. And then once they get a letter of acceptance or whatever that document is, I don't know, that comes back from them, say, you've got your grant, draw all those signs. that comes back from them, say, you've got your grant, draw all those signs, will they use that as a document to trigger the issue of a check that council can see? And then that check, when it comes to council, you'll see a copy of their acceptance letter or response document as well. Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Gail. Any other questions on it? I'll read the resolution then. 119, we'd resolve that municipality of Minnetonahs, Bozeman, should provide a letter of support to Minnetonahs and Bozeman citizens on patrol program for the purpose of helping it to obtain a community foundation of Swan Valley grant to partially fund the purchase of the patrol equipment. Further, be resolved that municipality of Minnetonahs, Bozeman, subject to the Minnetonahs and Bozeman citizens on patrol program, obtaining the community foundation of Swan Valley grant by the Minnetonahs and Bozeman citizens on patrol program with a $1,500 grant to partially fund the purchase of the patrol equipment detailed in the community foundation of Swan Valley grant application. Clear? Move it in seconder. Carrie, seconded by... Seconded by...
I won't, just because I'm on the committee.
Ken, all in favor? Carry. Now we can go back to seven point one, point... In regards to the council of Johnson's. Seven point one, point two, secondary view of February 18th, to council table. What page is that on, Ken?
I just bought it from, uh, this was from home, from the 18th.
Is there, what payment number you crushing?
All of co-ops.
All of them? Do you want to go through all of that?
I just don't understand what it all... If you had this sheet that I have, you'd see what I'm talking about.
Like the ones with the negative in front? Clint, is what you're...
Yep, there's negative ones. Some say double paid, some say not our bill. There's a whole list, but if you add that list up, on the payment amount is only $511. But yet, there's more money than $511 that, and I don't understand what the double paid was and the not our bill. You probably won't see it.
Oh, I see three that are not our bill regarding, it looks like furnace fuel bit. Stove die, I'm assuming, I'm assuming that's furnace fuel. Is that the three large ones there?
Uh, yep.
Forty-one, sixty-six, sixteen thirty, sixteen thirty again. Do you have them on your... I wasn't here for the...
Just send out to Gary, he'll see the... It all looks there on the February 18th. Yeah, that's from our meeting on the 18th.
I wonder, would there be a way to get LeAnn on the phone? Just being that she works there, she would probably know more.
She make me feel a little better off.
Just thinking with their survey.
Yeah, I just saw maybe just a quick phone call.
See the 511 on the one column is way lower than...
How about being that this has already been approved by council during the last meeting? And being that there's multiple items that are being inquired about now, we take this as a takeaway, and we bring it back the next meeting.
Okay, sure.
So then we don't have to bother with any resolution on that either?
Uh, no, we just, uh, no resolution, we just add on, but it'll present a discussion item.
Okay.
Just thinking, if I just walk over there, Clint, here. I'll give the speakers back, yep. I'm thinking we probably have to get those original invoices that says double paid, and that looks like the invoice number, Clint?
Does this make sense to you or not quite?
I'd have to go through it in more detail myself to make sense, Clint.
Okay, no problem.
Okay.
Didn't make sense to me.
I thought, I can recall LeAnn saying something about Janelle paying an invoice. I thought I remembered.
A double payment?
Yeah, I thought it, something back here is ringing that it was a double paid by accident. I could be wrong, but I, something is ringing there that...
But the check issued was $511, it looks like, only, and ninety-four cents, so yeah.
That don't seem right.
Oh, the only way it could be right, and I don't know what the starting, we may have had a credit if there was some double billing before, where we had a credit to start with. And then all the charges went against that, and we owed an additional $511.94, but we should get that investigated more thoroughly by them, I think. If that's okay with you?
No, that's fine.
Simple edits, a bit fresh start of the next round.
For the next meeting, yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Back to the beginning of the...
Yes.
I can do again.
I'm all over this paper tonight here, I just feel, I feel lost.
Jumping, uh, try to keep the resolution going.
Yeah, that's right.
Going to go to five point, uh... Oh, five point, there is no bylaw enforcement service report. Five point three, the RCP crime report?
We've got our reports, we've got our reports.
Is there, I'm sorry.
There's just a short written report, that's all.
Okay, we'll do that for bylaw services.
You want me to read down there?
Yep.
Okay, you're getting everybody else to, I don't want to be left out.
Everybody good.
Okay, bylaw enforcement services report for February of 25. Bylaw enforcement, no bylaw enforcement completed during February 2025. Animal control, the following list summarizes animal control activity for the month of February 2025, with involved one labor hour and forty-four kilometers of travel. The animal, the animal control expense for February 2025 was $356.24, which includes the monthly retainer of $300.
Any questions on it? Hearing done, I'll read the resolution 110. We'd resolve that the bylaw enforcement report January 2025 be accepted as presented. Move it in seconder. Derek and Ken, all in favor? Carry. Okay, now we go to five point three. RCP crime report. Derek or Clint, you want to, any commenting on that?
It's pretty small writing for me.
I was just gonna make a comment in regards to the writing. I can't see it with glasses, I can't see it without. Is there any way we can enhance this report moving forward, Trevor?
Absolutely, we can make it a two, two-page report.
Can we please? Because I just have one heck of a time following. Sure. Yeah. Thanks, Trevor.
If you'd like, I could print some of the now, how about make it a bit bigger?
I can read most of it here, Trevor.
Can you read, ready?
Okay. I can, yeah, just done a whole bunch on here, but total causal service was 51 total on the whole report from January 1st to February 28th, 2025. And that just takes a breakdown of all the different offenses. If anybody has any questions? That's about it on there, really.
Thank you, Derek. If there are any questions, then I'll read the resolution 111. We'd resolve that the RCP crime statistics report to council, January 1st to February 28th, 2025, be accepted as presented. Move it in seconder. Carrie, seconded by Gail, all in favor? Carry. Fine. I believe that's the camera, isn't it?
I believe it is cam.
Can jump back up to number five, protect it, if I can. Perfect timing, we're all ready for your, oh, for your bylaw report. Five point one, point one.
Yeah, we had two, uh, two calls in the last month, I guess. March 3rd, we had a call to, uh, to Bozeman. Responded to a residential fire alarm. It was found that the alarm was being tested. And the homeowner actually had advised the monitoring company of the test, but they failed to advise, um, 911 that it was a stand-down, so they ended up getting there, so it should have actually been stood down, but it wasn't. And then on March 5th, we had a, another alarm call to residential as well in Bozeman. And it was, uh... Yeah, it was, it was a false alarm, they had been cleaning the alarm and set it off. When they, uh, when the alarm company did contact them or called them, they didn't answer the phone because they were busy in the house or whatever, so.
Okay.
But we, we actually didn't leave the hall before we, one of the guys went directly there, so. So we were stood down, so we didn't leave. On March 5th, we, uh, training, we held a training session, again, on SCBA training for, for all the members that were there. Recruitment, the municipality fire department now has eighteen members, fifteen members in Minnetonahs, and three members are in Bozeman. Again, we continue recruitment efforts, again, just by word of mouth, Facebook, those types of things, so, yep. So, that's about it.
That recruitment effort sounds good, that's eighteen total members now.
Totally, yeah.
Really nice to see, Ken, thank you.
Yeah.
You and Stan, I'm assuming you're doing a lot of that together there?
Yep, yes.
So, yeah, thank you both.
Yep, yeah, it was, it's been good in Fensland. We've got a couple more in the, in the wings too, so.
Okay, that's good.
But you gotta...
Yep.
Figure out that line too, where you gotta draw it as well, so.
Great.
But, uh...
You've probably said this before, and I just need a refresher on this, when a call comes in, and now that we have the three in Bozeman people, the calls all come through Minnetonah station, is that correct?
That's correct.
The way it works, right?
Right, that's right.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that that's...
Right, they, they're...
...the way I'm thinking is right.
Yeah, like the, the members that are in Bozeman, they're on our, our, like, they're on our call system as well, so they get...
Right.
...by there, yeah, so, good. Thank you. Yeah.
And sorry for missing the open house in Bozeman.
Oh, no problem.
I really wanted to get there because it was changed from the initial date to a secondary date, I believe, and then it didn't work out for me, so.
Yeah, no problem, it was a good turnout.
I would have liked to come there and see how things are there now.
Yeah, it was a, it was a good turnout, so.
Okay, that's good to hear.
That's all I had.
Any other questions, Ken? Hearing done, I'll read the resolution 107. We'd resolve that the fire protection services report, March 18th, 2025, be accepted as presented. Move it in seconder. Carrie, seconded by... Derek, all in favor? Carry. Uh, five point two, point one, in camera. Read the resolution 108. We'd resolve that pursuant to section 1523 of municipal act, council shall meet as a committee as a whole to close the meeting and continue discussion in camera regarding investigation or enforcement of an act of a bylaw. Pursuant to section 83, 1D, council members shall keep in confidence a matter discussed at a meeting to close to the public under subsection 1523, until a matter is discussed at a meeting conducted in public. Pursuant to section 94, 1H, a council member becomes disqualified for breaching the requirement of confidentiality under clause 83, 1D. And the time is 6:46. All in attendance, except for Councillor Huckman and for, for Mr. Eisner. Move it in seconder for the resolution. Carrie, seconded by... Gail, all in favor? Carry. I'm gonna read resolution 109. We'd resolve that pursuant to section 1524 of municipal act, this meeting shall be open to the public at 7:20. Move it in a seconder. Carrie, seconded by... Ken, all in favor? Carry. And now we can keep going on down the line. Five point four, municipal emergency plan renewal.
So this agenda item has brought up tabling for council review, just because the sheer number of pages that are involved in the plan. So we brought in, um, part one at first, and we brought in part two, and now we've got part three completed. This has been basically a lot of staff, staff doing a lot of, a lot of time reviewing all the organization, all the contact information. So we've done a pretty intensive review this year versus the prior years, I think they're just simply rolling it over to some extent. But basically, the emergency plan has to be reviewed every year, approved by residents. So we'll bring it forward for our 2025 plan, which is basically the 2024 plan, updated to reflect 2025, uh, plan, and the specific changes we've done has been contact organizations, as well as council member responsibilities, we have that changed in council.
Yeah, I see lots of changes that I recognize in a lot of business groupings.
There's still a few. I think it's one page, 149, there's not even Northern Rentals open anymore, but they're still in here listed as a contact.
Oh, Northern Rentals.
Yeah.
So even if this is passed or whatever, and if a business or whatever quits during this time or whatever, then, then just amendments are made to this?
No, this is a requirement by the municipal government, the Emergency Measures Office. You have to review your plan updated and then, so we did this last year, and let be updated this year, but this year, having more staff, we basically put a lot more manpower into contacting those organizations.
Because, yeah, there's gonna be businesses changing personnel and stuff, that's gonna be changing as the business operates, so. Even higher to the, uh, or before it's...
Yeah, we do. Okay. Yeah, that one for Northern Rentals, that could get, that one could get scratched, I guess.
Yep.
What page is that?
149.
One forty-nine or?
Is it part one?
Thirty-five, part three, page thirty-five.
Page thirty-five, okay. Give me two seconds, I just want to get on.
I think the bottom one, Bill Softman's doing it.
That's, uh, Jason and Kevin.
Oh, is that, William, is that actually Kevin?
Bill may be an owner yet, though. He may be an owner.
So you're referring to Northbound Riders?
No, Northern Rentals.
Northern Rentals, ATVs and boats, do you remember that?
Yeah.
Under five point four category.
Yeah. So just, I'm losing my connection here, give me two seconds, I'll reopen it. Yeah, I can't open up the whole system right now. You said it was on page thirty-five.
Yeah.
And it was, um.
ATVs and boats.
ATVs. And boats. Now, is that page thirty-five of the document or your, of your package?
Of the document. The package says page one forty-nine.
Okay, one forty-nine for the, uh, the package. So you're saying that organization doesn't exist anymore?
No.
No, okay. So how about the, uh, are there any changes that you wish to make to this plan?
That's just the one I just noticed when I opened it up. I haven't had a chance to read it all.
Okay. Did council want to table this in a future meeting yet, or what would you like to do? Did you say we have to pass it today? We don't have to pass it today, but it's, um, we can table it once again and, uh, bring it back. Uh, the council has any changes they wish to make, they make it prior to the meeting, uh, with which, like, this package has been out for four days now, so, um, for the changes you want, we can update them prior to the meeting, and then we can have us, uh, ready for the next meeting for review and approval.
We. You guys want to do a little bit of time, maybe?
What time?
Okay. Yeah, we'll all have to go through it and make sure.
Five point four be tabled till, till the meeting. Yeah. That's where you're at, Larry? I'm, uh, sorry, I don't wanna bother you. Just. Yeah.
Okay.
Next on the N W. One one seven? Oh, I'm sorry, that's the resolution, uh, seven point one point two. Any questions regarding the payroll period? February fifteenth to the twenty-eighth? I'm good. Hearing done, I'll read the resolution, then, resolution one one seven. Be resolved that the payroll pay period zero five, two thousand twenty-five, for the period from February fifteenth to the twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five, an amount of twenty-six thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars and forty-two cents, be accepted as presented and approved for payment. Mover in the second. Carry seconded by. Eric, on favor, carried. Seven point two. Year-to-date statements of financial operations.
Boy, this is just based off our two-month, three months, or whatever, or four months, or two-month, three months.
It's the, when we did our draft.
Yeah.
Too bad, we had to slip by Zebra, so that's based on.
Okay, that's what I thought, just looking at somebody's.
They changed, yeah.
Changes.
Any questions on the statement of financial operations?
Okay.
Everyone does good, I'll read the resolution then. Resolution one one eight. Be resolved that the year-to-date statement of financial operations, general operations, January first, February twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-five, be accepted as presented. Further be resolved that the year-to-date statement of financial operations, Minnetonahou utilities, January first to February twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-five, be accepted as presented. Further be resolved that the year-to-date statement of financial operations, Bozeman utilities, January first to February twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-five, be accepted as presented. Further be resolved that the account balances report, March fourteen, two thousand twenty-five, be accepted as presented. Mover in the second. Carry seconded by. Clint, on favor, carried. Seven point four, tax title property sales.
So for this agenda item, um, what we're recommending is, uh, every year, we did do it last year, uh, basically, we have tax titled properties, i.e. properties that basically are arrears for property taxes. And typically the process, once your arrears go past two years, past two years, i.e., we're basically dealing with, uh, in there in arrears, um, December thirty-first of, uh, two thousand and twenty-three, or earlier. Basically, you're recommending that we do a tax title property, uh, collections process, whereby we reach out to the property owners and buy them a notice that basically their taxes are due. We've already communicated them previously that their property taxes are due, uh, but the idea being is that, um, we go through the process set by the municipal government, uh, in the tax, uh, in the tax act. Basically, a process of either collecting the property tax throwing, or basically taking possession of the properties, and then basically put those properties up for auction, and then basically utilize the proceeds of that auction for the purposes of recovering tax revenues that the municipality depends on to provide municipal services. In addition, this resolution also talks about our already existing tax title properties in Minnetonahou and Bozeman, that basically we'd be doing during that same auction process. The idea is, idea there being is that we already own those properties due to non-payer taxes, and what we'd be doing is basically the knowledge of those properties as well for the collection of revenue, dots, and those taxes.
Still any questions, Trevor? Regarding, say, two thousand twenty-one. If it, um, I guess what I'm gonna try and say here is, uh, does there come a point where that money will actually get rolled off if nothing happens with either recovery or collections?
Yep, so the idea is, uh, with the, with the tax title property sale.
Mm-hmm.
It's an auction, so basically you're, you're trying to recover, uh.
By selling.
To sell, so basically, the profits enables us to charge, fifty-dollar bid fee enables us to charge recovery of costs involved and actually due to sale. I.e., we're, uh, engaging an agent to the sale on their behalf, and then basically after covering those costs, uh, any costs that are left over, we would then apply towards the property taxes that are owed. If the revenues of the sale are not enough to cover the fifty-dollar bid fee, the, the person who is doing, or the organization that's helping sell the properties, or the actual, uh, property tax balance that's owed, then that's when we recognize the loss.
Okay.
So it's recorded as an expense, i.e. our forfeiting revenue. We recorded revenue previously, but then we aren't collected, we've all just, we're not actually collected. So that revenue is recorded in prior years, now becomes the expense this year, because the fact that we, the revenue was recognized previously, that's what actually.
Yeah, so after all, options are exhausted, then will become a point where it could be technically rolled off?
Exactly, yeah. And the process for that is, is straightforward, written down by the municipal government.
Okay.
So we're not gonna creep this process on our own, or follow the process.
Right.
For.
Excuse me, and I just saw that twenty-one, which isn't a, a large, large amount, but it's still there, and I was just wondering, yeah, what would eventually happen?
Yeah.
That answers it.
Thanks.
Any other questions? No one will read the resolution, oh, two zero. Whereas section three six five two of the municipal act provides that council may in any year designate the immediately preceding year or any earlier year as a year for which properties and taxes in respect to which are in errors for the year must be offered for sale by auction to recover the tax errors and costs. Be it resolved that the designated year for which properties and errors be offered for sale by auction be two thousand twenty-four, meaning all properties with outstanding taxes from the year two thousand twenty-three or prior. And be it further resolved that in accord with section three six three one of the municipal act, costs shall be the actual costs incurred by the municipality for each parcel listed for the tax sale, plus that administration fee of fifty dollars per roll as set forth in the municipal regulation fifty slash ninety-seven. Mover in the second. Clint, seconded by Derek, on favor, carried. Seven point five, two thousand twenty-five financial plan.
So this agenda item, uh, the council is, uh, where, because they were fully engaged in participating in the process. Uh, the municipality of Minnetonahou has conducted, uh, three open house town hall meetings, uh, during the month of January. The first one was for our, uh, two thousand twenty-five capital, uh, budget, as well as our five-year capital plan, which were part of our two thousand twenty-five financial plan. The second one was for our two thousand twenty-five operating budget, and the third one was for our, uh, two thousand twenty-five revenue budget, as well as bill rates, uh, that are basically generating a large portion of our, our revenues. The town hall meetings were about six and a half hours total. I think one meeting was about two hours, and the meetings were about, um, one meeting was two and a half hours, and the meetings were about two hours each. Uh, basically, there was, uh, good engagement, uh, about twenty people attended, uh, council, uh, all council, or most, almost all council, fair for all meetings. And in that session, we gathered, uh, feedback from the attendees regarding our capital projects, and there was a discussion for the operating budget, a lot of questions were asked and answered, as well as for our revenue budget. Uh, there were takeaways in addition to our capital, uh, budget. In that session, we had basically dots. So red dots was basically people who were in favor of a project, whatever capital projects, and green dots were basically, uh, for people who were not in favor of, uh, whatever cap projects. So we did a presentation, we had all of our projects displayed on the table, uh, and towards the back of the hall, uh, basically, people picked up handouts, and there was handouts available the day before, and basically, we asked them during the presentation that went before they left to put down their feedback and dots, uh, on the actual projects. So this brief, uh, information item basically details the feedback from, uh, uh, the attendees. There was also posted notes there as well, the people writing down written feedback, which we incorporated with quotation marks. Those came directly from the actual, um, posted notes that were there. And then basically during the operating budget for the operating expenses, as well as the revenue and bill rates, uh, uh, town hall meetings, there was a lot of Q and A back and forth where there was takeaways. So the takeaways are also detailed in that agenda item as well. So this is what the feedback from attendees, approximately twenty in total, uh, was during these open house sessions.
Any questions on the report?
Were these all the questions that were asked by the public, or was there some that didn't get answered yet or on here?
Well, there was other questions that were asked, but they were answered during the session. These were basically the takeaways. So, uh, during the meeting, uh, some, uh, council members were taking notes as far as takeaways. So we can get down to the, uh, two thousand to twenty-five operating budget meeting, uh, basically, the takeaways are listed there, so we had one, two, three, four, five, uh, let's see here. And then basically, the, um, then the revenue budget, we had the revenue budget indicator, there was three takeaways from that.
I remember a question about, uh, gold, uh, something or other.
Yep, there was the gold pins, which it sounded like during the meeting, but they weren't actually gold pins, they were pens with gold trim. So what they're referring to is, Counselor, in your hand, you have a pen, and all of the, all councilors have pens. These are the pens that we give away to the public at the counter, uh, at the Bozeman office, as well as the municipal office. These are also the pens that we give away at our open house sessions, and basically, it's promotional, it's got our, uh, logo with our address or name on it, and basically, this is, other municipalities do the same as well. So there was one invoice there, and it's attached in the agenda, where basically, we've got it where, for example, we spent five hundred and seventy-two dollars because we buy the bulk, and that basically bought us two hundred and fifty pens.
Page four, it's answered, Clint, did you see that?
Yeah, I didn't realize it was pens, I thought it was.
Pins.
Gold, gold lapel or something.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I heard pins too, but basically, I went through the video and basically tracked out what yellow it wrote on it.
Okay.
And there are no pins.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions on that?
I missed the first one there, but I just went through some of the questions, or the voting there, yes.
Okay.
The capital plan. So I'm going to review that a little bit more than there. I never seen anything of that until tonight.
Maybe we want to give them more time just to run through it.
Nope, we're good to go. I'm happy, yeah. I'm just going to, for my own, you know, just catching up on, I'm going to review that at home. It's all stuff we've talked about.
Read Resolution 121. We've resolved that the 2021 draft financial plan open house session, information item, March 18, 2025, be accepted as presented. Move for the second there. Seconded by Gary, all favor. Seven point six, monthly finance report.
So monthly finance report, basically, every month we're required to provide an advance report regarding our financial operations. And at this stage, this report is just an update showing the activity that we've done over the last, since last council meeting. So in this year, as I mentioned, financial plan presentations, we had our open house presentations where we got the dialogue and feedback with the public, six and a half hours of good discussion and presentation. So we completed that. And basically, we incorporate that feedback, will incorporate that feedback into our financial, 2025 financial. And this will be done prior to us going to our, announcing of the actual public hearing. The reason being is that once we're a public hearing, the plans basically lock down until after the public hearing. So we wanted to allow council enough time to incorporate that feedback for the public in the actual financial plan development or going to the public hearing, or basically putting up doors for the public hearing. So that's where we are right now with the financial plan. Currently, we are progressing in our 2023 fiscal audit, basically working with all of the auditors, working out bank reconciliations. One problem we've had, which is not in the report, is you're dealing with a challenge with TD Canada Trust regarding, they've brought us payments, we have forty-seven payments that we're basically questioning. We received the money, but we don't know who the money was for. We called the toll-free number for actually the payment processing department. Their system only allows their help desk to go back six months, but this is for 2023. So we've got to go to tier two support. And basically, we're not getting any response back from them. So what I've done is I've advised Janelle, to our finance manager, to continue with the toll-free number, and booked an appointment with the TD Canada Trust branch manager on Thursday this week, where I'll basically be going with him, to his office saying, here's the actual list of payments that we need to track down. This is actually, it's been over a month, the council has delayed our audit because this is a big item, bank reconciliations before, and requesting that to branch manager's assistance. And also, in the second attachment to our second folder, I'll give them all the emails that we've sent requesting help, which is about seventeen pages of emails correspondence where we sent it. They said, thank you for your submission, we'll respond back within ten days. And then ten days later, two weeks later, it's a response, we do it again. And then when we finally get somebody, it's like, oh, we only did this for six months. We have to go to tier two support. So that's basically where the delay is. It's similar to kind of the Scotiabank Mortgage Corporation, where basically you run some difficulty there. So hoping to use all this one a little bit faster, being that we've kind of seen this before. But with the branch manager, we've got the branch right here, and hoping that time we can get them to our council.
So that TD banking issue, that would be anything from water bills to taxes, any payments at all?
Yeah, not necessarily just taxes. Typically, so when you go into a bank and you've got your bill, you can pay for your bill at the counter. Say, I've got, I've got a bill here for Natop Hydro, I've got this, that, whatever, and one of them is for the municipality of Minnetonah's Bozeman. So basically, you can pay there, they'll process the payment, and then they send through electronic transmission the payment to us. What they're supposed to do is send a spreadsheet showing what accounts or what needs of people these are supposed to go towards, because it's actually on the bill. But basically, for whatever reason, either they didn't send it to us, or we weren't, what we did receive, it did not get applied. So it's those two things, being that we don't know who to apply it to, obviously. If there was a communication, it did not get applied to an account, or there was no communication to us what it was for. My guess is, this is just speculation, because it's 2023, is that payment arrived and either spreadsheet wasn't sent, or the staff were denied during our closure. There was those staff who actually processed this stuff. So it could have been during that three and a half month period where you have you closed. So if that's the case, that could be why we have forty-seven payments. Basically, we're trying to deal with versus the Scotiabank Mortgage Corp., which is basically only seven payments, because it's a lot more. So typically, for a three and a half month period, you'd expect how, I suspect that during that period. So that's that kind of situation there. Then final part for the finance report, our finance staff has done significant MSA training on our financial modules. And rather than having just our financial people to take those training, all of our employees are taking those training. So a municipal clerk can now help with the debt, financial transactions. A min clerk can do that kind of work, I can now do that work. So we basically, for short periods of training, typically two, two and a half, three hours, the office, we have everybody here for training, and it was basically a MSA trainer from either Regina or wherever they're based, basically teams again, through teams. And basically, you have a training session, like you typically have work groups there, you've got a trainer train the group, you can ask questions, and go through demonstrations up our large screen, where basically it was all, all, walked us through the processes. So the idea being is that the more people have for training and more people who are on the front counter doing that kind of work, it increases our resiliency, kind of be able to take financial operations.
Any other questions on the report? Read Resolution 122. We've resolved that the finance report, March 18, 2025, be accepted as presented. Move for the second there. Gary, seconded by Gail, all favor. Eight point one. Do you want to save your voice box, whatever you're doing within your absence, or whatever you're doing in your own, and each council was taken?
Okay. So eight point one, can you spot valley where this week? So, I can go to it.
Again, you're okay.
So this is basically the month in which the Swan Valley, they give out their grants and basically started to announce what their grants are. So at this stage, what they've done is they are, this resolution here, for a proclamation that April 21st to April 27th, will be Community Foundation of Swan Valley where this week. And the proclamation is fairly lengthy, and the attached letter from the foundation is including this agenda item. And are there any questions on that?
Three and a half, I'll read the resolution number 123. Whereas a community foundation of Swan Valley is a charitable organization that is focused on the creation of permanent endowment funds. And whereas a community foundation's goals include the promotion of philanthropy in the Swan Valley, sustaining permanently endowed funds, fulfilling community needs and providing community leadership. And whereas a community foundation promotes the development of children, youth, and seniors programs, promotes the arts, culture, and heritage activities, and promotes the enhancement of the environment. And whereas a community foundation supports health, wellness, sports, recreation, as well as other community activities and facilities. And whereas a community foundation is a vehicle for donors to contribute to cash, trusts, bequeaths, and real property to create permanent endowments that will build and improve our Swan Valley community. Therefore, it being resolved that the municipality of Minnetonah's goals, by proclamings, April 21st to April 27th, 2025, as Community Foundation of Swan Valley where this week. For the second there. Eric, seconded by Gail, all favor. Purple Day. Number eight point two.
So this resolution item is basically a purple item. So it's basically from the epilepsy seizure association of Manitoba, in which they are requesting that the council, the municipality of Minnetonah's Bozeman, basically declare the date of.
March 26.
Yep, March 26. That's purple day. Basically, in recognition, it's to build awareness. To build awareness of the, the support of people who are living with epilepsy, letting them know that they are not alone, and recognition of the work that they have by the epilepsy seizure association of Manitoba does in building awareness of this disease.
I'll read the resolution 124. We've resolved that the municipality of Minnetonah's Bozeman proclaim Wednesday, March 26, 2025, as Purple Day 2025, in support of people living with epilepsy, letting them know that they are not alone, and recognition of the work of the epilepsy and seizure association of Manitoba, and building out. Epilepsy awareness, sorry. Move for the second. Gary, seconded by. Gail's in the other? All favor. Gary. Eight point three.
Step out for LP.
Yep.
So eight point three is just a resolution, the rescheduling of the LP hearing in regards to 2023 and 2024 appeal to the board of commissioners regarding their 2023, 2021 on the assignment. So just if he changes what it is, that's all it is? Okay.
With that, I'll read the resolution 125. We've resolved that 2023 and 2024, Louisiana Pacific Building Solutions, supplementary property assessment, appeal hearing, date be rescheduled for 6:00 PM on April 22nd, 2025, at the Minnetonah's municipality council chamber. Move for the second there. Gary, seconded by Derek, all favor.
I'm going to get a water. Anybody else need a water in the room? Water?
Okay, everybody's coughing up front, so I don't know, you guys are doing it back.
Okay. We're all sick.
Can we ask questions? Can I ask questions?
Regarding? Regarding what?
Actually, the, the, whatever color day that is. What was the point of that whole exercise? Like you guys, you talked about it, we decided it's a day for the town. What was the point? Why did we decide that was a day? What happens that we decided? So, and that might not be an appropriate question, so you can tell me that.
I could, I received, yeah, we have time to do this. I received an email from the epilepsy and seizure association of Manitoba, and. In one of the paragraphs, say, there are numerous ways to engage in purple day, a proclamation recognizing March 26th as purple day throughout the, through the illumination of building purple or putting a string of purple lights or a message on a digital sign promoting purple day, decorating a door or wallpaper, staff wearing purple for the promotion of purple day on social media or on the website. We welcome all efforts to help promote awareness of epilepsy seizure disorder. For 2025, we have developed a media toolkit, which is available on the website with posters, social media banners, and information on purple day to help promote awareness of both epilepsy and seizure disorder on purple day, all made easily accessible with the.
Okay. But what happens? Does anything actually happen? So, like, did we, I didn't hear a decision on an action, like, are we lighting up a sign? Are we sending out an email?
So the proclamation be made, what we're going to now do is with any kind of proclamation or event, we will post it on our municipality website, it'll go onto Facebook, and it's also going to be going onto the sign. As you come into Minnetonah, we'll be updating the sign to reflect that. Similarly, with the previous resolution for the community of Swan Valley where this week, same kind of approach. We're not going to be lighting up buildings with purple or putting banners, because we, I'm not aware if you have that capability lighting, and I'm not going to buy a banner for this event, but basically promoting good causes like that on those platforms, which doesn't cost us anything, but we're still participating.
You mean the whole conversation? I didn't know that, that sounds like a great answer. That's how we blanket handle all that crap, for lack of a better term. Somebody asks, we put it on the billboard, we say yes. So everybody, I just didn't know that, I'm assuming everybody knew that, sorry to waste the time.
No, no.
No? Thank you.
Moving on to eight point four, Swan Valley planning district development plan. Do you want, can you go through some of the background, or your voice is still fine?
Don't be, go ahead.
Just to go through the background, the planning district development plan was last updated at possibly 21 years ago. The government of Manitoba contracted Urban Systems Limited to develop the draft plan, which included engaging in the city, town, and municipality government and public consultation engagements. During January 2024, Urban Systems Limited representatives hosted consultation engagements with town and municipality representatives and public in the Swan Valley region. During June 2024, the planning district distributed the planning draft for town and municipality review, feedback, and approval. On September the 3rd, 2024, council reviewed, approved the draft plan by Resolution 313-2024. The planning district compiled and forwarded all municipality feedback and approval to the government of Manitoba for review and feedback. On January 24th, 2025, the planning district distributed the draft plan containing government of Manitoba, GOM, department edits and suggested changes. On March 11th, 2025, Urban Systems Limited representatives met with municipality council to discuss the planning district proposed draft plan changes in Minnetonah's Bozeman and surrounding areas. For the town of Bozeman, that the current planned agriculture slash urban reserve, commercial, industrial space slash recreation, and residential zones within the boundaries of Bozeman be changed to a principal community zone as defined by the draft plan. For Minnetonah, that the current planned agriculture, urban reserve, commercial, industrial, open space slash recreation, and residential zones within the boundaries of Minnetonah be changed to a principal community zone as defined by the draft plan. And that the current planned agriculture rural zone be changed to agriculture transition zoning as defined by the draft plan analysis. Changing agriculture slash rural zones to agriculture transition zones will increase municipality's ability to accommodate both. municipality's ability to accommodate exposment and Minnetonah's growth and development into surrounding currently agriculture areas to be designated as agricultural transition. And then, um, subject to council's approval by resolution forwarding the signed approval resolution to Urban Systems Limited in support of the proposed draft Swan Valley Planning District Development Plan changes for the communities of Minnetonah's Bozeman and surrounding areas. Everybody else wanna add anything for that?
I got a lot of questions about this. Um, I've talked to a few individuals over this last week and always really excited about these changes. We're encompassing a whole bunch of land that used to be designated in other ways as now principal community. And, uh, it's pretty hard for me to understand what the advantage is to the taxpayers and the property owners. The consensus of every single person I've talked to so far is they don't wanna see any of these changes.
So I was unable to make the meeting you guys had. What is principal community? Like, what is it they wanna switch it from?
It's out here somewhere.
Yes, it's a, it's definitely specified what it is for the plan, so it's, uh, there's a.
Cause I tried flipping through it. It made zero sense to me, so.
A very, very end here. This is what it is currently. So you can see we've got, if you compare it to.
This one.
The proposed change, you can see we have a ton of different ways of, of zoning this land. There's now all gonna be town.
Well, that's what they consider principal community?
Yeah.
Yeah, that five hundred fifty acres now becomes principal community.
Yeah, and then as well, this funny little thing on the end here is going from agricultural transitional to rural community. So it's also taking a step closer to being town.
Than what it is currently?
Yeah.
And did they have a reason why they wanna do this?
Uh, the main reason was that, uh, they're supposed to review it on a regular basis. So with the, uh, Swan Valley Planning District started working on this, they haven't done it for twenty years. So it's twenty years since its last review and updated and already it's been a one-year process because they started doing it in the summer or early summer or I think it was like February, March of last year. So twenty-one years of change now. And now they're, they're trying to do this and this is basically, they have urban planning, uh, with basically the contracted company that they're working with. And it's basically gone to the province of Manitoba for review as well. So it's supposed to be part of a regular review of their, uh, the district development, i.e. how we're gonna develop with the valley as well as within the province of Manitoba. Just for now, the only region that's going through this process. And basically, it's, I think twenty years is far too long to go, but basically it is what it is. So here we are, twenty-one years of change later, now trying to provide feedback on their proposed review plan. Uh, the maps, uh, that are in the attachments, I think a picture says a thousand words. Basically provides a good representation, uh, but quite often the devils the details. And as we're asking more and more questions, we're, we're getting more and more questions that we want to ask. So at this stage, uh, this is where we are right now in our kind of review and investigation of what's been proposed to us. What the planning district is looking for is a resolution, basically say that we agree to be approved. However, really this isn't, this, this isn't a decision that we'd be making ourselves. It's basically a, that's decisions we made by the province and through a resolution will provide of our feedback on this. Because at the end of the day, um, the province will do zone its, its, uh, do its development to the way like they're basically gathering feedback, that feedback just is providing feedback, does not mean that we can say thou shalt do this. It's just basically, it's exactly this, we're providing feedback.
I understood they were doing it in the name of expanding the community. Well, I spent half a day driving around Minnetonah and we got enough room inside this yellow zone to last us for our next hundred years as far as the current expansion of Minnetonah is, so I really don't know what the, there's a lot of open space. Huge amount of open space. We've had, what, two hoses built in the last fifteen years, maybe?
And that's very good feedback. Um, I think it's, they're not just coming to Minnetonah to say they think that we're gonna be, uh, exploding population base within the province. I think they're just coming to us because we're part of a region that's being updated among many regions that are gonna be updated.
The cringe man on some of the farmland is even more concerning. Like, it's just like Ken said, it's getting closer to having restrictions and being one step closer to.
Uh, I think what you're referring to is in the, in the plan, it talks about the details of what the different zones are. And that, and that's basically part of their proposal. Uh, I think the idea of having transitionary, or you could say, a community is probably a good idea, but basically the small rules as far as what this transitionary would be involved is basically where that could be at the, the micro level, which we are in, we are used to now, you know, area, it could be impacting people negatively, uh, based on how they're operating or how they're using the land right now. So, yes, there's change will always affect people, some people positively, some people negatively, so, um, that's, that's gonna be bad.
Yeah, any questions from council?
Just trying to get a. Hundred seventeen acres of rural community that's taken the place of the, uh, hundred and seventeen acres of, um.
Rural residential?
Rural residential. The rural community definition is what I guess what I'm looking for at this point. And I've just been going through some of the laws here and I haven't been finding that. So.
So that would be really likely. It's got. So I can't speak to this for me, at least on the lengthy documents, seventy pages.
Yeah.
But there should be a section there talking about rural community.
Right.
How that's defined, how the development there works or what's allowed, what's not allowed, maybe not to the minutia, but basically it does provide some information there. Just not sure.
I'd like to do a little bit more research on that particular area myself. Just from what I'm, I'm hearing and seeing what's out there in that, uh, part of, uh, the town here. Or edge, or excuse me, edge of town.
Yeah, I am, I'm sensing, these are good questions that, uh, I think three councils have already raised, uh, questions saying, hey, there might be some problems with this. My recommendation to council is that we can table this and basically bring it up the place we have our first meeting for response. And when we do have response, if council does not agree with this plan, uh, we can do a resolution for that, but in that timeframe, I think we also do a resolution saying, here's a letter to the Swan Valley Planning District stating our concerns with this plan, rather than just saying, we don't like your plan, your resolution. We say, these are the concerns that we have, be included in the resolution that we have that we vote on. And then basically that'll be signed by, by myself, by the Reeve, and that'll be a formal communication going back. So basically what the planning district does their next meeting and the approval process on this, they can have some written detailed feedback on what our concerns are. And to answer the question about what rural community, it's on page nineteen. How it starts and it goes through to page twenty-one. Nineteen to twenty-one, Trevor? Yeah, it's, it's just under three pages. Thank you. We need to research that.
What role does the planning district have in this? Cause that discussed, like I said, the government of Manitoba contracted Urban Systems and talks about the government of Manitoba, but then the planning district is, is involved. So what's their role? They're the people that implemented or that's.
I think.
They bring it forward or?
I think the planning district is the local body, in fact, are at the regional level that the Manitoba government works with. So the Manitoba government does not wanna get involved in every single area because it doesn't know every single area. So we have planning district offices in every region. They know the regions better than the government does. So they need to work with those, those, uh, districts to provide the feedback. So, uh, Urban Systems was contracted, uh, by the Swan Valley Planning District, uh, mainly because the Swan Valley Planning District doesn't have the technical expertise to prepare a plan like this, but this is their area responsibility. So they contracted up that technical part. And there was also a lot of, uh, last year, they had public open house sessions, they had council meetings. I think there was four or five council, uh, meetings, councils, I think maybe five. Uh, I was at three of them myself and there was also the public ones as well. Uh, I was there as well. It was at the, uh, Lige Hall in, uh, Swan Valley, Swan River, where they had a bunch of displays and they were there for quite a while talking to people, so.
I agree with you. The government doesn't know what's going on at our level. So that's where I find it hard to believe. How can they tell us? If you're saying they're gonna make, they're gonna do what they wanna do, how can they just tell us? You just said they don't understand what, at our level, how can they just force us to? Why is it on our table? Why are they asking or suggesting that we make changes?
Uh, I'm speculating because I don't have the answer to that question specifically, but I'm suspecting that there's probably some legislation in, uh, provincial legislation that, that gives them the empower to do that.
Can you find that for us? Is that possible or is that a big deal?
I will inquire. I, this is my area of forte, but basically, uh, I think we can do an inquiry to Swan Valley Planning District and just inquire that what gives the province of Manitoba the authority of, because it'd be good to know.
Sure, because there was other things too, like the animal units, you know, on the farms outside of town, which aren't even in-town limits that affect the farmers outside of town. So.
Exactly.
If, if the government's forcing us to do that, well, that's a little concerning, but if we do have a say, we should be speaking our say, so.
Yeah, and we are advocating for the people who are here and so on, uh, like for the residents. So I anticipate the letter that we sent with our concerns won't be just a one major. Probably several pages saying, we're concerned about this, 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 this. And then, uh, all we can do is we just provide our letter, advise the concerns that we have, provide the resolution, print a copy for resolution. If council approves or declines, that's at their, at their discretion. And basically say that this is our reply to your request for feedback.
Just had a thought starting to read up on rural community here. Would our bylaws in regards to animals allowed and that type of thing? Overrule any that they're setting out as just objectives? Uh, if we had, say, we use Ken for example, Ken's got ten acres out there. He wants one cow and two horses and a few sheep. And they're telling us, no, Ken can only have one, one cow, no horses and a few sheep. If we have rules in regards to animals, would ours technically still be valid or enforce to cover off that area? Is.
Cause that's a big part of what I'm hearing. I got a neighbor who's got twenty acres and if this goes through, he's gonna be allowed ten animal units on his property. Well, that's ridiculous. I mean, it's fine if you're thinking he's in town, but he's not in town. He's got a twenty acre property. So we're definitely, from the talking I've done around town, we're getting a lot of pushback on, like, we're not talking about somebody who's in over where Ken lives. We're talking about guys who are presently able to have a little operation.
Kind of out of the way a little bit, and that's why they picked that area.
Yeah.
I'm gonna study up on, on the definitions of some of this stuff and try and do a little D E two, so you don't have to shoulder it all, Trevor. But I just, I was reading some of the stuff and a lot of it's almost conflicting.
And then that's been, yeah, that feedback's come up, uh, council members. I've also struggled a little bit with it as well.
Yeah.
Uh, I can't answer the one question partially in that, um, if zoning definition says you can only have X number of animals per X area, then you've already got over that amount currently, uh, you are grandfathered in, so if you.
Yeah, but now you're gonna try to sell that twenty acre property. Good luck.
You're using grandfathered in forever. That's the.
So good question. So basically I've got, uh, property with five hundred animals. I'm only allowed to have two hundred animals per the zoning. What do I do for basically going to sell it? Is that gonna reach my value of my property because of the fact that I have less animals? So we have to inquire to find out about that because that question did come up with council during their review. My hope is that we, uh, it's, I think we don't just ask a question, we also ask, is this a potential solution? Is that we would basically inquire is would a variance application to council be able to address that? If it is, then basically if someone's buying property, you could then say, I'm gonna offer this property. One of my subject twos is satisfactory transition of a variance order to make it where I can keep these animals because my names, I'm this person buying land from somebody else and I'm not going to purchase it at this price unless my subjects are, my subject twos are satisfied. And then basically, um, as you go through that process, they put a tentative offer in, put a deposit down, purchase. Uh, the subject twos would be listed, uh, wherever they are. One would be basically a requirement for variance change. And then basically, once yet that variance change was actually successfully achieved, that subject would be removed. The idea is that you remove your subjects one by one and once all the subjects have been removed, the sale goes through. If you cannot remove a subject, like if one cannot be satisfied, then basically the purchase is canceled, the deposit goes back to the potential purchaser, and then, then they're gonna be free to sell that to somebody else.
Uh, just speaking for myself, I would not be very comfortable with leaving all this on a, on a variance because this council might say, oh yeah, those properties over there, we, we would grant a variance, no problem. But the next council might say, forget it.
Yeah, and that's good feedback. So I think that'd be one of the items we put in the letter. If that is, if it turns out to be, uh, where you can only do it through a variance process, then you're right, basically future councils could impact the market value of a property nature.
Before I table this, uh, this agenda item or whatever, seeing if we're speaking on the subject.
If I'm allowed to, I just, it's probably the first question that was asked, but as soon as you change the zoning, does it not change your rates? So are these, when, when these people suddenly come in that area, are their taxes not gonna change?
Something we can take down and add.
Same question I have, why are they doing it? So.
Yeah.
There's a reason.
Yeah.
It's not gonna get cheaper.
No, cause if you're noticing your tax slip, yeah, there's rural residential, there's farmland, there's different categories.
With this in Alberta with acreages and what you have, right? You pay your taxes based on what your zone is.
Exactly.
I'm gonna move on and.
Yep.
So we can get through the rest of them, so.
So it sounds like we're tabling this and doing.
I am recording a table, uh, eight point four.
I'm gonna make some notes on, on what's really concerning. I think we can bring it back to the next meeting then.
I'm going with eight point five. Monthly administration report.
Do you need water, Trevor?
Nope, I'm good.
You need to read some of it though?
I got it, I'm not gonna read it. Uh, so the monthly administration report is, uh, fairly comprehensive. It is, uh, what it covers. Um, what I'd like to add to it is that, uh, we've done a lot of administrative training on our M U S O P system and basically during that training process, uh, we basically learned how to use our modules better. So we have a project right now, cemetery review project, where we're increasing the, how we actually administer damage and, uh, basically, uh, record data for our cemetery system in M U S O P system. Uh, the other thing too is our voters list. This has been an area where we've had M U S O P system for quite a few years now, but we've never actually used voters list functionality. And what that basically is, is you can take voter information, put it in the system and then as people say, hey, I moved to the, to the municipality, I'm gonna set up a voter account. When you set that voter account, we also put you on the voters list. So six months later, you're now eligible to vote. So you buy a property, you basically are saying, hey, I bought this house and now here we put you into the system, we also put you on our voter database as well. Uh, once you let that property be purchased, uh, you can add it for six months, you are now eligible to vote. So currently what we've been doing is our, uh, your. So currently what we've been doing is our, uh, senior elections officer has been going around updating our voters list, which took an extensive amount of time and effort during our last, uh, by-election. And what we've done is we've taken all that data, we've moved it all into our municipal system, and now our voters list is now maintained internally and updated on a real-time basis after providing useful services to residents within the, uh, municipality. So I think this is, it'll save time and effort, uh, basically we're up to date in that there's, uh, three years that we have to do a by-election, we don't have to go through a whole updated process, all we do is hit print, our voters list is printed right there using real-time data, and basically it's ready to be used for the election. Of course, declarations of people saying, hey, I just moved here, or basically I'm a resident, we still go through that process per the Elections Act, but basically, we're not gonna be doing, uh, spreadsheets that are basically two, three years old, we update it, we have to run around for two, three weeks trying to update them, because we're gonna be updating them on a daily basis, real time, as we do our regular, these long operations. So that's one project that resulted from the, from the, uh, municipal training sessions during the month of January. Also, uh, we completed our G eight meeting, uh, our municipality due to staff, the O A for, uh, period of time of December, during two thousand twenty-three, we had not hosted a G, uh, a G four, G eight meeting for quite a while, uh, basically we had our G, uh, for G eight meeting on February twenty-fourth, it was three and a half hours in duration, uh, we basically had nine speakers, and in the agenda, you can see the actual agenda for that G four, G eight, G four meeting, and, um, it was quite a good focus on education, uh, information session, there was good participation, uh, every legislative assembly also attended, so, uh, although it was closed, that's what those meetings are, they're just for councils and for speakers that are coming in, uh, to get an idea of what we're actually kind of covering and the educational work that we're doing during that session. Also, for bylaws, um, you're working the bylaws that we previously indicated, that you progress through, and the one, um, the one, uh, new project that we've been working on, started in January and worked through to March, is a review of all of our, our existing bylaws, so. With, in two thousand twenty-three, after our closure, when we started doing staff back in, the system of filing and record keeping for bylaws was doing great. Uh, I know when I started, we had all, a total of five bylaws on our website, and basically we have since got a lot of the bump ups on the website where basically everything that we had heard means we're posted, and it hasn't been that case for quite a while. So, with the hiring of our new municipal clerk, uh, that was one project that, uh, she was put as a clerk to function, or clerk position, was one of her responsibilities, bylaw management. So, during the period of three months, she has reviewed all of our bylaw binders, which were here, there, all over, uh, the office, I mean, some were in the back, some were in my office, some were just in, uh, in, uh, covenies, basically in other work areas, we gathered them, we located them, gathered them together, investigated all of them, and we basically built a timeline of every bylaw, is it a new bylaw? Is it offending a previous bylaw? Okay, if it's offending a previous bylaw, let's get that bylaw. If that bylaw was meant to replace another bylaw, let's get that bylaw. We basically put the timeline for every bylaw that we have, and during the process, the result of it, we identified seventy-six bylaws that are currently active or in force that basically have technically expired, i.e. they've been replaced by other bylaws, or basically they were time frames that have expired, or they were, uh, tasks or activities or projects that have been completed. We also found out that the previous, uh, uh, administrator was basically utilizing bylaws where it would be more appropriate to use resolutions. So a resolution is basically a decision of council to do a project, a decision of council to take action, decision of council to, to make, initiate a new program from all those lines. You don't utilize bylaws for that. Uh, what you do is basically you use resolutions, bylaws in this cell are, are laws, it's saying basically, this is what we shall charge per a, uh, public utility board order as far as the utility rates, that's now a bylaw, or this is what we're gonna be doing for animal control, or unsafe properties, or unsafe properties, that's a law. You don't use bylaws to basically implement what should be resolutions. So in a review, we identified seventy-six bylaws that need to be repealed. So council, uh, in this information item, we've identified, uh, or sorry, in a future, uh, in the agenda, it's coming up towards the end of our agenda, we identified the seventy-six, uh, bylaws that we're recommending for repeal, and that has been a project that we've been working on for the last two and a half to three months. Other items, uh, just small items, uh, basically, just updated what we're currently doing, outstanding items are still outstanding, we are down to currently eight outstanding administrative issues, uh, part of the report, we had eleven issues, uh, as well, but those parts have been resolved. So we originally identified back in November, uh, nineteen administrative issues that we have, uh, resolved, eleven have been resolved, and we have eight that are still outstanding, and the information item talks about just those eight items.
Any questions for Trevor? Move to the court. Yeah, I did have one D here, it was just, uh, May of two thousand twenty-five, council will host a scrap plan town hall presentation meeting, I'm just wondering if June perhaps would be a better month than May.
I can move that to June if you like.
What does the rest of council think? I know it's a busy month for the farmers for sure, and people just even getting spring stop done, it's your first nice month. July is too late, June perhaps may be better, I don't know what's the feeling in the room. Might be more, better attended if it's in June, or it might make no difference either.
Might depend on the weather on the exact day.
Yeah, that's true too. Just a thought I'd throw out, because I did pick up on that D.
What do you think as a farmer is June?
May is no good for sure.
Yeah, and June is maybe easing off or not.
Pardon?
June maybe easing off.
Yes, June would be easing off.
Yeah?
Yeah.
And I would say June.
You know, not to say that we're gonna likely get a lot of farmers there, but it captures maybe everybody, or gives them the chance to at least, I would. Clint?
I agree.
You agree?
Sure.
June is better for them. June there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I guess.
It doesn't matter to me either way, because I'm not farming, but it's better for you guys.
You'll be doing your gardening along, yeah. I'll read the resolution one two seven. We've read that. One two seven, be resolved that administration report, March eighteen, two thousand twenty-five, be accepted as presented, mover and seconder. Ken and Gary all in favor? Ares. Bylaw repeal.
Oh, excuse me. So this agenda item, uh, is for the first reading of bylaw, two zero two five dash one one, historical bylaws repeal bylaw, and this is the one that I touched on in the administration report. Uh, basically, the municipality has identified a total of, I think I said, seventy-six bylaws that basically are needed to repeal, either because, um, they're bylaws that were set up or that they should have been resolutions, for like, decisions of council, and whatever the resolution was for, basically that task has been completed, they were for time frames that have expired, they're for projects that have been completed, or they have been replaced by other bylaws. Uh, some through appeals are also due to the fact that, um, we had the village of Bozeman, and then we had the, uh, town of Minnetonka, and then we have the Farah of Minnetonka, and then we had the municipality of Minnetonka. So through that evaluation, uh, bylaws were created, were basically replacing with previous bylaws, uh, some of those from the villages and towns that made up our current municipality, and basically those, uh, already existing bylaws were never actually repealed. So, the list, this agenda item is long, this information item is nine pages. Uh, the resolution, uh, the actual bylaw itself contains the same information, but, uh, but the information item or approval item has more detail than what's actually the bylaw, the bylaw just lists the bylaws for, for repeal. And my recommendation to council is that we do the first reading, approve the first reading about this, uh, bylaw today in order to table it, and council, Monday of this week, all council members were emailed, all seventy-six of the bylaws that we're recommending for repeal for your review. Uh, if you're a print amount, they'd be about an inch, inch and a half tall, so rather than having to worry, for this, that's other item, bigger packages, what we've done is basically we're recommending for approval for the first reading, which labels as a tablelet, and then if you need two weeks, three weeks, four weeks to do your review, you tell me when you're ready for the next reading.
I think just looking at this, a lot of these I won't even have to review because, like, stuff from, uh, ninety-eight to ninety-nine, council deputies, well, we have current.
Overrules that already, so.
So I won't, you know, have to go into much detail with some of them, some of them I made about, yeah. That makes sense what you said, though, give us time.
Yeah, let's go back to nineteen seventy, so.
Yeah, yeah, I wrote stat here, so.
There's a typo on page two, I don't know if it really makes a difference, but just, um, under town of Minnetonka, it says January twentieth, thirty fifteen, I'm assuming you should be twenty fifteen.
Yes, that should be twenty fifteen, thank you.
Not that at all.
See, yeah. Oh, you do?
Page two.
The long pages?
Nope, the short one.
Yeah.
This is bylaw oh five, twenty thirteen.
Yeah, it's a typo.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay, I got you there.
Just in case.
Just a typo.
Causes headache farther down the road.
Okay. Further questions, and I'll read resolution one two eight, be resolved that bylaw eleven dash two thousand twenty-five, be a bylaw regarding the repeal of historical bylaws be given first reading, mover and seconder. Derek, executive by. Clint, all in favor? Ares.
Um, I just had a short watershed meeting about a week ago, just going over the, uh, new budget for the year, hour and a half meeting, and it was all numbers, so we got through that good, and that's all I had in the last period since I saw you guys, I guess.
Nothing for us that we have. Nothing here either.
Gail?
Um, we have a, that sort of thing coming up sometime at the end of March, they haven't nailed down these exactly yet, but.
The Air Court Commission?
Nothing.
Everybody still buying?
Things are going to here.
Trevor?
Nope.
Nothing. I don't even have any either, I think Gary and I have some meetings set up for next week regarding, uh, we have medical recruitment, and then we have, what's the second one? I'm relying on your memory now. We have two next week, medical recruitment's one, and I'm not sure what the other one is.
There a watershed coming up?
That's Thursday, I have that one. Yeah, so this, next week we have two, so. I'll read the resolution to adjourn the meeting.
Oh, we have the camera? We're not adjourning, yeah. Did we have more?
Are we, are we going into it, cam? Are we have more?
Yeah, we do.
Oh, here.
Yeah, there should be.
We're going home, Trevor.
We're going into camera. Resolution one two nine, be resolved that pursuant to section one five two three of municipal act, despite subsections one, two, council committee has a committee of the whole to close a meeting and continue discussion in camera regarding employee land legal matter that is in its preliminary stages in respecting rich discussion in public would prejudice the municipality of Minnetonka's bosom's ability to carry out its activities or negotiations. Pursuant to section eighty-three one D, council member shall keep in confidence a matter discussed at a meeting close to the public under subsection one five two three until a matter discussed at a meeting council conducted in public. Pursuant to section ninety-four one H, a council member becomes disqualified for breaching the requirement of confidentiality under clause eighty-three one D, time at eight thirty-seven, mover and seconder. Sure. Gary and, Gary and Ken, all in favor? Ares. Resolution one three zero, be resolved that pursuant to section one five two four of municipal act, this meeting shall be reopened to the public.
Eight fifty-seven.
Eight fifty-seven, mover and seconder. Gary, seconded by. Gail, all in favor? Ares. And adjournment, resolution one three one, be resolved that this regular meeting of council be adjourned at. Eight fifty-eight, mover and seconder, Gail and Derek, all in favor? Ares. Meeting adjourned.